I call this meeting to order and again ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Daney?
Yes, here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Zawansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. The first item on our committee meeting this evening is under building and zoning. Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have three items on our agenda tonight. The first is the townhomes at the Grasslands, final subdivision, and PUD. The petitioners are requesting approval of a final subdivision and PUD plat and final PUD plan for the townhouses at the Grasslands Phase Two. The final subdivision and final PUD plan identifies a total of 116 units in 23 buildings with six units buildings, 14 five-unit buildings, and four unit buildings. The front building elevations are primarily cultured stone veneer with a vinyl siding. Side and rear elevations are vinyl siding. A balcony is provided above each unit's garage. The final subdivision and PUD plat and final PUD plans for Phase Two are in substantial compliance with the preliminary subdivision and PUD plat dated March 20, 2021, last revised July 21, 2021, and the preliminary PUD plan dated January 29, 2021, and last revised June 25, 2021. This is for us to forward to the Plan Commission. With that, is there any questions from the committee? Would staff like to go over anything that wasn't covered?
I do want to emphasize that the building elevations, this was the first time the board seen anything. For Phase One, the developer did not have a builder lined up.
Okay.
D.R. Horton's now moving forward, and these were the renderings. We worked with them to get some upgraded materials.
Thank you.
The petitioners are present.
Is there any other questions from the committee?
Are these the townhouses that were designed for the, like this, over 55?
No.
Originally?
No, these are not age restricted at all. This is north of the tracks. The age targeted development is part of Phase One.
I think this is, like you said, I think this is the first time we've seen these.
Yes.
Yeah, interesting.
Will this need to have a public hearing?
It does not.
I guess I do have a question about the front part. It's hard to depict from the picture. What is the brick-looking stuff?
It's a stone veneer if Dan and Patrick want to...
Good evening. Patrick Cook, 621 West Jefferson, Naperville, Illinois. The front is a cultured stone material. The color is kind of off here, but it's generally a stone material.
So this is, they all have garages in the back, I'm assuming?
Yeah, this is rear-loading walk-up products. From a streetscape, you will not see a garage. The garage is in the back of the home.
Okay. This looks pretty nice, but I've seen some stone fronts that look a little shabbly. Yeah, it looks better on the picture here than it does up there.
Thank you.
Is the only entrance on Naperville Road?
Correct.
Is there any other future plans to have an entrance and an exit?
There really isn't any possible location due to wetlands and the railroads to the
Will there be any modifications to Naperville Road for the entrance into the subdivision in light of last time's meeting, all the traffic and truck traffic and fast traffic?
Yes, there will be. Dan Olson with Crown Community Development. Yeah, there will be turn lanes as part of those improvements. The improvements off of Naperville Road have been approved by Cook County Department of Transportation, so we've received that approval.
Maybe you could get them to widen the whole thing.
We can try. We'll ask.
I know I brought up one thing when we talked about the parcel to the north, is when there is a development, can there be a sign posted that no trucks entering or leaving when site work is being done or construction traffic go northbound on Naperville Road? It has to go southbound to West Bartlett Road.
That is a condition of our development agreement, so we will certainly honor that.
All right.
Good point. Good. Looks nice.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do have a request. We are scheduled to close on this property with our buyer, D.R. Horton, end of this month. In the interest of meeting that date, I would like to request that we go directly to the board meeting on the 18th versus committee of the whole to meet that, so we could ask for that consideration, please.
I don't think we have any issues with that. No, thank you for asking.
Very much.
Yep, that'll be fine. Thank you for being here.
The next item on our agenda is the Southwest. We'll send that to the Plan Commission.
Yes.
But the second item on our agenda is the South Winds Business Park Lot Three re-subdivision. The petitioner is requesting a preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision to re-subdivide Lot Three in the South Winds Business Park to create two lots. Lot One will be 2.86 acres and Lot Two will be 3.7 acres. Lot One of the re-subdivision will be used for proposed self-storage facility, and Lot Two does not have a proposed end user yet. We are here to discuss this and forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review. Do you have anything to add?
This is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, is the, pardon me, but I didn't know which lot. Is it going to be the lot that's interior going to be the one that's going to have the self-storage?
It's the one that's at the corner of South Wind or Benchmark and Route 25. So it's the western lot.
Just thinking for the future, and especially with those houses right across the street, is there any issues with deans here? I mean, I'd rather see some type of retail business on the main street and have the storage facility on the lot inside it. Have we thought about that, or is it the lot size too wonky?
Development agreement that was part of South Wind allowed industrial uses such as this for the entire property.
Yeah.
There wasn't a restrictive that it had to be commercial.
Mr. Kelly, is there any questions as far as where we put the storage facility, or they want instant access off of 25?
I think they want instant access to this facility. Believe me, we marketed this product for a number of years, you know, trying to get all the usual suspects and the technology in it. There isn't a critical mass despite all the home building in the area. There's not the traffic, not sure, the down traffic.
Okay.
Okay, this is, so the storage facility would go on Lot One?
Correct. So the storage facility would be located in approximately this location.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? We'll send this on to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review. The next item on our agenda is the South Winds Self-Storage Facility. The petitioner is requesting a site plan review for a proposed two-story self-storage facility at the southeast corner of Illinois Route 25 and Benchmark Lane in the South Winds Business Park subdivision. The proposed 104,284-square-foot building exceeds the floor area ratio. The petitioner is requesting a variation to allow the floor area ratio of 0.84 for this site. Traffic will circulate the building clockwise on the one-way drive aisle. Curbed islands are provided at the corners of the building to protect the vehicles loading and unloading at the drive-in doors and ensure parked vehicles do not obstruct the flow of traffic around the building. The petitioner is also requesting a variation to reduce the perimeter landscaping requirements. The landscaping ordinance requires a minimum of four feet wide landscaping area around the perimeter of the building. The landscape plan identifies 5.5 and 12.5-foot-wide landscaping areas at the corner of the buildings only. With that, is there any comments from the committee?
So the landscaping would be, that your, the variance would be physically four feet from the building. Everything else around the perimeter will still be maintained along the fence line, if you want to call it that?
Correct. So our zoning ordinance requires that you have a minimum of a four-foot-wide strip of landscape area along the entire perimeter of the building. Because they're having drive-in doors along the perimeter, they couldn't put in the landscaping, so they put in landscaping at the corners to meet the intent. They are still putting in the required landscaping around the perimeter of the site.
I think there's definitely a need for this out there, and I think the developers know that, so I think a lot of residents in Bartlett are going to opt to use this facility just based on the location itself, so they're going to be staying in town instead of leaving Bartlett to find a storage facility, so. I'm not jumping up and down on it. I would rather have retail, like President Wallace mentioned, but this is the use before us currently.
Is it, is it a nationwide storage place, or is it like a local, personally-owned?
My name is Jeff Budgeo from Architect's Studio. I am the architect for the project. This is a national organization that'll run it. It has extra space. It is, it has regular hours. This is not 24-hour access to it. The facility is also extremely well-lit on the exterior. There's also security cameras. It's very nicely done. Also, I don't know if we can put the renderings up?
You can have the elevation.
Oh, all right. This is the exterior of the building. It's a good-looking building. The materials that are used are very high-end.
What's the total height of the building?
I'm pardon?
What's the total height of the building?
Total height of the building is approximately 25 feet, 24 feet, right in there, to the top of the parapet. I would just add, there's no request for a variance on height. If this were a single-story building, this building could be done just as it's shown without any variance for the FAR as a single story. And these, this use has an extremely low traffic count. On a busy day, there's eight to 10 visitors a day to the facility. It's not a generator of traffic in any way, shape, or form.
What color will the building be?
These colors represent, the corners would be the green, then the pieces between them would be a variation of different grays.
You sat on that color?
They're corporate. It's corporate.
Yeah, I think this, I think that's my only concern, is what this looks like when you're going down 25.
I have copies of three-dimensional renderings. I could pass them around.
I'd like to see it, yeah.
Yep.
What material is the exterior? Is it insulated metal panels?
Metal panels?
They're approximately four inches thick. They're...
Thank you.
They're cheap material. Like, you stretch it a little bit, there are some...
Signature buildings around the country that have been done with this material in downtown areas.
What's the name of it? What's the name of the material? Do you know?
It's Kingspan metal panels.
And you said it's not a 24-hour facility? It's...
There's typically, there'd be one employee onsite during normal business hours. People would have a key card or a key code to get in. It does not work 24 hours a day. If they need to get in after hours, it's possible, but they have to make arrangements in an emergency situation. It's not something that's done on a regular basis at all.
It's closer to this green than a lime green.
Yeah, that green doesn't...
Oh, yes.
That's the neon green version.
The colors always go a little wonky when they get put up on to...
I'm sorry, what's being stored in there again?
I'm sorry.
What, what's the, so anything?
It's climate-controlled cell storage.
Okay.
It's where you'd go in and you'd rent a cubicle, and you can store things in there, and it's climate-controlled. If it's documents or precious family heirlooms that you don't want to leave in an unclimate-controlled facility.
All your stuff. So there's no access storage on the outside? Everything's...
No, no, there are garage doors you can see along the bottom on some of the sides, but they are only accessible for their individual unit. They can't get into the building.
What direction will those face?
They will face east, south, and west. But there's a considerable amount of landscaping that's done around the perimeter, which you can see in the rendering. I think it's going to be fairly difficult to see those.
It looks better on that print than it does up there, yeah?
I like that there's no fence.
Yeah.
The landscaping looks good in the renderings.
I look at it, it's big, and it's going to be big when you drive down Route 25 and for all the residents that live there. I mean, I definitely agree with Trustee Hopkins. There's a need for it. We just built a beautiful, Bartlett just built a, we didn't, but somebody built a beautiful gas station over there with nice stone and columns, and we fought to have stone columns put on all the gas canopy columns, and as much as I like this, I just think it's a lot of metal without having some architectural cast stone or some sort, something to soften this from what looks like a tilt-wall warehouse to something more that I would call it a retail look, okay, in my opinion. This, to me, should have some sort of retail attributes to it, whether it has fake windows that look, you know, that are blacked out with some stone columns.
There are windows that are demonstrated on almost all of the corners except for, I think, one. There's a series of windows that show that are illuminated at night.
So are you talking about maybe more windows in between along 25, maybe, to make it look more retail?
I just think it looks very cold and commercial for that area, is my opinion, but, you know, I would like to have seen something, and we fought pretty hard to have other businesses over there not so hard commercial-looking and soften it up a little bit with some cast stone or decorative stone or something.
Are there any other locations within the brand that has different facades?
There are instances where they'll use pre-cast concrete panels, insulated panels. I'm not personally aware of units that have masonry on them. Don't see a lot of, you know, placed masonry. Sometimes they'll be embossed in the pre-cast panels, but pre-cast panels aren't an option now. They're, you know, more than 12 months out with the economy the way it's been. You just can't get them.
How tall is the truck stop in the corner? What does that peak out at?
Maximum height of that?
Canopies.
Between 15 and 18.
This lot is actually higher, though, right?
This would be taller, yes.
This lot sits taller than the other lot. It's lower on the corner, I'm assuming.
No, I believe this is lower.
Is it?
Yeah, it's fairly considerable.
The diesel canopy itself has to be at least 20 feet tall to the top, so. I am glad you provided these renderings. I'm much more comfortable with this green versus that green, so.
Yeah. I think it looks nice. I think it looks okay. I mean, I'm totally...
Let's make sure this green...
Thrilled with the use, but as Mr. Kelly pointed out, we've been trying to get something there forever, so.
What type of signs, what type of signage do you...
There's only going to be signage on the building. There's no monument sign or anything out at either street. The access to this is not off of 25. There's access off of Benchmark.
Any other comments from the committee? Then we will forward this on to the Planning and Zoning Commission to review it and to do the required public hearing, so we will have time to hear what the public has to say. Thank you so much. That's all we have under building and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next item we have on our agenda this evening is under community and economic development. Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have community branding requests for proposal. One of the short-term complex goals in the village's strategic plan is to develop a community branding plan. Other elements of the strategic plan also apply to this goal, including enhancing public awareness, enhancing community events, continuing business recruitment, and working to improve the retail business profile in the village. With these goals in mind, staff began working on requests for proposals to hire a firm with expertise in municipal branding. We discussed it with the EDC, Economic Development Commission, last year and determined that we should add funds to the village's advertising budget to hire an agency for the rebranding campaign. A CHATCH is a draft RFP, which would be promoted via the village's communication channels as well as sent directly to agencies in the Chicago area with expertise and experience in municipal branding campaigns. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tony to go through that.
Thank you, Chairman Gansey. Yeah, as you stated, this RFP for municipal branding campaign incorporates several elements of the village's strategic plan. You can see a lot of them relate to economic development, business recruitment, promotion of events, increasing awareness and engagement, and even very specifically developing of a community branding plan. So we did have several meetings at the Economic Development Commission about this last year as the RFP kind of morphed from starting off more or less as an economic development tool and then incorporating more and more of branding local events, promoting local businesses, and really a dual focus, not just a business recruitment tool, but a business retention tool and marketing, as I mentioned, of events and a broader promotion to area residents. So this really ticks off several boxes in terms of rebranding the village, stepping up the marketing that has slowed down, I think, over the past few years as the pandemic, new materials that we can use for trade shows, production of videos, coming up with some type of imagery and branding slogan. So again, the goals of it are to increase community recognition with village residents and those in surrounding areas. It's also, one of the goals of it will be to increase tourism, people from other communities and village residents, more patronizing local businesses more frequently. Of course, we'll be using this to reach out to some expanding and relocating businesses as a business attraction tool and something that we hope to put in front of a lot of investors and developers as well as the village continues developing and as you continue seeing these projects come before you, so we can put that information out there of some of the great things that are going on here in town. So with that in mind, we have this draft RFP before you, fairly broad-ranging, as I mentioned, and we'd like to hear whatever comments you may have with it. As I mentioned, it's been worked on, it's been before the EDC a few times, and we've looked at it among staff for a while, and we'd like to send it out in the next few weeks to hopefully have a great branding firm come before you in the next few months.
Todd, I read this, I'm sorry, I read this and looked at it and whatnot, but did we, did we get a, do we have some type of budgetary number that we're operating within? You know, I mean, we've created this, but, you know, are we looking at, you know, we have to have some kind of an idea of what this is going to cost. Would you like to put a...
Right. We added, we added about $20,000-plus to the advertising campaign. Like, when we started looking into this at the EDC last year, we discovered that a lot of the communities that do this engage with firms for multiple years, so we wanted to make sure that we budgeted for it, so.
Yeah.
There's not a specific number on that because that's...
No, of course not, because...
Part of the RFP.
You have not to exceed in there, but I was just wondering, you know, if you guys had some kind of idea of what this might cost, you know?
The other communities that have engaged with, some of them have been as low as $5,000 upfront to do.
Oh, really?
But that's, that's basically the logo and a slogan. The firms that get into the video production and the design of materials, sometimes that can run $15,000, $25,000, $30,000 a year.
Yeah, because if you come in here, Tony, if you come in here with five grand, you know, we could do that on our own. I mean, what I'm reading into this and the massiveness of this, you know, the scale of this, you know, far exceeds this, that's a low budget. I mean, it's not even worth, you know, doing for five grand. I mean, my God.
Right.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll, it'll most likely come in quite a bit higher than that, but...
Of course, yeah. Okay, I just want to get an idea, so. Not, not holding you to anything, because you've got to send these out and then you have not to exceed in your render costs, so we'll worry about that later. Thank you.
So when we send this RFP out, I know on the short-term complex, one to three years, it mentions to determine the need of a TIF district in portions of downtown and along Lake Street?
Right.
So will this firm identify this and like help us understand what we could do if a TIF district was created?
No, I think we look at this as a separate project from looking at the TIF. If, if we move forward on looking at those areas for a TIF, there was our specific TIF consulting firms, and they specialize in TIF law and redevelopment plans. However, it could tie in together at some point during the course of the branding campaign. Of course, one of the elements of it would be to promote development opportunities in the town, whether they be in the industrial areas or along Lake Street. So when we have these materials and/or videos produced, if it happens to be around the same time that there's some redevelopment opportunities along Lake Street or elsewhere, that is definitely something we would promote.
Okay.
We would ask the branding agency to incorporate that in part of their branding.
One suggestion I have, because it seems it's kind of like marketing to everything, I would like to see with whoever sends in a proposal, like what they would specifically do for like economic development, like who are we, what's the persona we're marketing to, and how would they specifically do that? Because otherwise, it just seems like it's going to just be too general, and we need, it seems like we need content for like someone coming in to look, like we had the person come take a look at spaces in town. We're trying to put together, we put together that email with the information. Seems like we need some very targeted communication for people like that that we could pull and send, so it's consistent and has the data that they're looking for to help them make a decision. That's what I would suggest, to kind of change that up, or when they're sending their proposals in, to look for it in there.
Yeah, we tried to address that in the RFP with the different elements, where some of it would be economic development-related and business attraction-related, so it would be a wide range of materials. You're right. It's hard to come up with a brand that incorporates both business recruitment, industrial, and local events as well, but that would definitely be a big part of it. And for that specific question, that would be something we would send out in broker blasts and through our email campaigns, use it at trade shows, do whatever we can to get it in front of the eyeballs of the brokers and the developers and the dealmakers in the Chicago market.
I think one of the things that we talked about as a staff with the EDC was that we want this to be flexible. We want to be able to use it over a number of years, and we want to be able to kind of slot it into the things that you're talking about, Trustee Gansey. You know, kind of the same overall look, maybe a little more refined for the residential component and more refined for the business development or the business retention. So, you know, we really are asking them to give us something that we can play around with.
So my question, so the RFP is simply to find a firm that's qualified to put together a plan for us. That's step one, if I've read it correctly. Step two is, these are the requirements, or these are the things we're looking for, our wish list. Develop that and propose a budget. So I look back to my first meeting where we had the Bike Path consultant come in, and the consultant did a great job. He outlined a program for us for the next 25 years. What I liked was impressive was he had tier one, tier two, tier three. So for X amount of dollars or less, we could do tier one. For X amount of dollars, we could do tier two. X amount of dollars, we could do tier three. So I understand the overview of this, but if we just go back, so right now, we're simply just looking for a firm, a firm that can, can give us what we're looking for, and that's kind of what it's asking.
That's right, Trustee Laporte. At this point, we specified in there to have some experience with municipal branding in particular, which that's not every single branding firm that's out there, so, yeah, that's, that's something we'd be...
So what are we paying for, or why do we put a dollar... Or why do we put a dollar sign on this? Because they're supposed to come to us and impress us with their package and then we select the one that we feel meets your needs. Then when we get into specifics, putting together marketing programs and branding and all that kind of stuff, then we can kind of get budgets together. Is that, is my train of thought proper or am I off?
I wouldn't say that you're, you're off with that. I'd say this is one first step in the process in terms of identifying who's, who's out there with the expertise and what the various costs would be on these various, various line items. We don't have to go with, with every single item that they, that they propose. We just want to have some, some choice into who we engage with this important project and we could change it as you said.
Like Paul said, it's a multi-year campaign. He had an attached budget number for this year to get the ball rolling. So if we see something that we may like in one firm and we feel so it would be appropriate to engage with it further, that would be something that we could work internally and address in the budget cycle. If we had to attach a number forward to get the ball rolling.
Okay. Is that, yeah. Is that how the Bike Path consultant was selected? Because I wasn't, I'm not aware of how that worked out. Or is that unrelated? It's not even apples to apples?
That was a grant that the village received and so CMAP gave us the grant. They selected the consultant. So the village had no input in that whatsoever.
Okay, I get it.
So if we receive, we'll receive proposals from maybe several different groups, correct? Are we committed to go forward with any of these at this point?
No, I, you know, we kind of envision getting the RFPs back, presenting them to the EDC to see what they, you know, to kind of narrow the field and then bringing it back to you, but we do make sure that we, we always leave the door open to reject everybody.
Do we, do we feel like that? Business development aside, do we feel like that we're lacking in event promotion?
Not so much the event promotion, but creating like a more cohesive branding for the community in general. You know, we have a lot of different events. I mean, this last weekend, we had six or eight events in town. So that, you know, nothing's going to incorporate each one of those individually, but an overall umbrella is kind of what we're looking at.
And do you, can you give us, Tony, what other communities were you looking at when you were trying to define what you were looking for? Did you have, do you have some specific communities that you looked at that worked with firms like this?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And these are all great points because some of them focused more on business, some of them focused more on community, but yeah, there were, there were a lot of local communities. Elk Grove Village, Elm Hurst, Glen Allen, a group that Bartlett's a part of called Access O'Hare West. We hired a municipal branding firm for that. So this, this RFP before you tonight is what I hope to be kind of taking some of the better elements from some of these other RFPs that I, that I reviewed. So probably five or six local communities. Hanover Park as well, did a, did a rebranding about three or four years ago.
Using, using one of these?
Yeah, they hired a branding consultant, yes.
Tony, I have a question for you. What's the timeline on this? Once you release the RFP, how much time will you give them?
We typically like to give them six weeks or so. I mean, depending on when this goes out, this could run into the holidays, but typically you give firms six to eight weeks to put together something like this.
I'm really excited to see what the results will be, you know, six weeks.
So how many firms do you anticipate going out to for bid for a proposal?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to a dozen or so that's specially do.
Eight, you said?
Well, you mean sending it directly to municipal branding firms?
Yes.
Yeah, probably around a dozen or so that do this in the Chicago market.
And how do we, how do you anticipate narrowing it down to a certain number, like to three finalists?
Well, I would hope that the EDC could review that in terms of not just based on, on price, but somebody who has come up with some kind of snappy, nice marketing.
I agree. And to, to Trustee Laporte's point, it would be nice if we did finalize down to three and see what their campaign is and see if it kind of matches the vision of the boards, whether the EDC and us as the trustees. I would like to see something like that once it's narrowed down. And I think for me, I agree with you, it's above and beyond price. I'd rather get the best value, but if somebody's way off in left field, it doesn't match what we know we want here as a village, then the price doesn't matter.
Right.
I would think it'd be very, kind of similar of what we did when we interviewed the insurance agencies for the, for insurance policies here.
I would just kind of, oh, go ahead. Has the village embarked on anything like this before in the past?
Yes.
Seven years ago or?
More, in, in 2005, I think, or two. It was one of my first projects and there was really one consulting firm that worked with most of the towns at that time called Visual Edge and Bartlett had previously been engaging with them. So the, the EDC brainstormed at that point and came up with that Never Far Away branding logo and, and Visual Edge was the firm, but there wasn't, there wasn't an RFP issued at that time. It was about 16 years ago.
Did you find value in that?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We use that in a lot of marketing pieces and a lot of advertisements for the industrial areas and it became pretty, it became pretty well-recognized in the Chicago market.
Thank you.
Whoever we select, I would like to find a way to have a matrix where we, you know, track the ROI on it, like what benefits is it bringing over the next two, three years to see, just to, you know, for five years from now, if we want to do this again with a different firm.
I think that should be in there for them to present to us too, what kind of data they would.
Correct, their data feedback to us consistently.
Like how do they measure that was successful? They might even have that for other villages they've done then.
The other thing that we should include and maybe it's in here is the future trends. So, you know, we're looking at Instagram and Facebook and emails now, what are the future trends and can we be ahead of the curve instead of catching up, similar to what you guys did when you evaluated your technology needs for the village. So a firm that was, that had foresight.
Right, we, we added some language to that in terms of not even really wanting to specify just the current social media trends, but some language to, I mean, probably wouldn't have included TikTok in this like a few years ago and if, if this is a multiple-year endeavor, we want to make sure that the branding firm incorporates future trends, like you said.
I think it's a great idea. I think especially since we haven't done anything since 2005 and just to get a roadmap for the future, I think it's worth at least looking into.
Should we also consider if there's like a marketing and PR portion to it, just to know what they would suggest? Because I, like for instance, there's the site only, only in your state and then there, there's like blogs or videos written and then they're placed there. Like are we envisioning that this would include helping like with placement or writing to promote Bartlett?
Yeah, yes, I think we want to make that clear. It, it goes beyond their just development of slogans and logos, but helps with placement and, and the copy, some of the marketing ad copy, working with, with staff to do that.
I'm a little bit, I guess, maybe confused as to what the purpose is. I agree with Trustee Ganzey, we need to make sure that different areas of branding are actually doing what they're supposed to do, but I'm not sure why we need it. Our industrial park is almost full. We, every community event we have is almost packed. I guess maybe I'm old school, progress with pride can carry on for eternity.
Well, we'd never change progress with.
No, but I mean, even the whole, I'm not even really too sure what the goal would be in spending money on something that would, we would use this part. I don't, I don't get it.
As you know, this grew out of the strategic plan process that we did with you folks and one of the guiding forces in this was not so much what are you today, but what are you tomorrow and not only your recruitment, which you're right, we, we are almost running out of space, but Tony, I forgot what you tell me, what the percentage is that you have to spend your time with recruitment and retention. That's why you get an R and R report every month. So it's not just for people that are coming. We want our folks to stay here. We want our people to grow here. So we want to kind of send that message that they don't have to go to another town to expand or do something else that they want to do. Did I get that right, Tony?
You did, yes.
I, I mean, I kind of agree with you and I think the great part of this is, I mean, it's going to educate us where our, you know, failures have been.
Where our blind spots might be, yeah.
And if we don't see value in it, we don't have to select anybody.
Correct.
So I kind of, you know, I look at this as an educational experience for me anyway, so.
I would like to see our, our progress with pride welcome to Bartlett signs to be a little bit more visible when you come in. I don't think we need a consulting firm for that, but just, just a little point to throw out there. Refresh the page or something.
I agree.
All right, so it looks like we'll issue the community branding RFP and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Ganzey. Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Dany.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item we have on, on the agenda this evening is the proposed 2022 property tax levy and it's an amount of $11,788,712. It covers general police pension and debt service. With that, I would like Todd, if you would be so kind.
Thank you Chairman Dany. Yeah, this is the beginning of our, of the levy and I'll work through this. So first of all, most of you know, as we went through the budget process, we talked about the three areas of the levy. General fund has, that's where the general fund property taxes go, principal and interest to the debt service fund for our general obligation bonds and also to pay our contribution to the police pension fund. So we passed the levy, the state determines the burden or how it's divided between the three counties that we're in. So right now, Cook County, 38.83%, DuPage, 60.74% and Kane County was unchanged this year, 0.43%. Cook County was down 0.2%, 0.24%. DuPage County then went up the 0.24% and that's determined by the state. Again, we started out with the budget process. We set basically the general levy, the debt service levy. What was estimated during the budget process was the police pension part of the levy and that was, that's completed during an actuarial calculation for the end of the, at 4:30 2022. So right now, we, we review it, we pass the levy by the last Tuesday in December and then it's collected next year, which actually in our, for accounting purposes, it goes to fund the 2223 fiscal year. For truth and taxation, for Illinois truth and taxation laws, we compare the, the prior year's extension to the current year's levy. So our general corporate levy, $6,519,094, that's unchanged from the prior year, but the counties add to our levy an extension for loss factor. So compared to the extension from last year, the actual levy is down 77,000 and police pension, it would be up 143,000 and I'll get into more details on the police pension levy. And then for debt service, it would actually be down 70,000 compared to the extension. So the, our proposed levy, $11,788,712, that's in the first column. That's actually a decrease of just over $4,000 or 0.04% compared to the extension. But when you compare it to the actual levy for last year, again, the general corporate is unchanged. We did increase that the prior year for the brush pickup program, $86,000. Police pension levy, we're proposing that it's increasing 169,175, or just under 8% and the debt service levy is up $9,238. So overall, the actual levy would be up about $178,000 or 1.54%. This is the breakdown of our debt service with all the, with the abatements. 2016 bonds was for our, our police station. We did refund those. The 2022 A bonds refunded part of the 2016 bonds. So those 2016 bonds will be dropping off in a few years and the remainder is being paid by the refunded 2022 A bonds. 2017 bonds, that was the refunding of the fire station bonds that were issued in 2007. There's just a couple of years left of those. We do abate for what the fire district reimburses us for part of the fire district that's outside of Bartlett corporate limits. And also, this will be the last year that the Brewster Creek TIF pays a portion of the debt service on the fire station bonds. 2019 bonds, we refunded 2009. That was for the Ballfields, Kohler Ballfields, Village Hall, Water Meters was all in 2009, refunded and also part of the 2019 bonds is the Devon Avenue Sewer Project. That's the part that's being baited, the 557. 2021 A bonds, that's all being baited, being paid out of the water fund. That's for the Lake Michigan Connection Line Receiving Station. And then 2021 bonds, those are refunding of the 2012 streets and the North Avenue Stormwater Project that was part of the FEMA, FEMA project. So after all of that, the net levy, $2,896,000 for the debt service, which is just up slightly due to, the debt service is pretty level from year to year, but varies a little bit. Here's a, just a list of all of the levies from 2012 going on. Overall, the general levy, down 539,000 from the peak. That, that was the highest year that we had as far as the levy, 2012. So the general levy is down 539,000 from that period. Police pension is up just over 1.1 million from 2012 and the debt service is up 1.3 million from 2012. So overall, just under $2 million increases in total levy since 2012. Here's another picture, just of the police pension levy over the years and the annual investment returns. Police pension is funded by the police officers, contribute 9.91% of their salary. Investment income on the money in the police pension fund is another part and then the village covers the rest through the property tax levy. So the total annual contribution for the police pension this year is determined by our actuarial calculation, $2,522,796. In total, that's up 319,000 from the prior year. We're proposing that 150,000 of that is paid out of the surplus balance that's in the general fund. fund, so that would leave the 169,175 on the levy that we're proposing. We're still reducing the assumed rate of return on our investments, so we were at 6.875 the prior year, we're reducing that down to 6.75 this year. The consolidated fund where we moved the money, we actually moved all of our police pension investments March 1st. Just recently, a few weeks ago, they determined their assumed rate of return on the investments is 6.8 percent, so just one tick over what we're, our assumed rate's at right now. So, we will make adjustment if needed as going forward. We're not sure how the consolidated fund is going to compare to our previous returns, but I think we're comfortable at 6.75 for this year.
Todd, what's the amount of total pension fund for the police?
What's in the pension fund? How much used to be? No, I'm just.
Before this, no.
We topped out at 60 million during the year, 60 million, but we're at about 55 now.
55 million, is that relatively recent?
Yeah.
Okay.
55, probably a little under, under that. So, 133,000 of the increase in the contribution is due to reducing that assumed rate of return. We also had six service retirements, one disability retirement over the last year, so that's more than expected, or it's more than our annual or normal rate of retirement. We hired, we had seven new hires, so the new hires go into Tier Two, which is a slightly reduced benefit. Right now, out of our active police officers, we have 30 Tier Two out of the 58 actives. So, that's why our actual annual cost is going down, but we're, we're right now at about a little over 73 percent funded, so we're still catching up. The state law is 90 percent funded in 2040, so that's, that's the goal moving forward unless they make some changes on that. We have one of our police pension trustees here. The president left us, though.
Palmer didn't want to take the heat for the increases.
Assess value, again, the only thing the assess value does is it affects, it affects our rate, and then, as long as everybody's assess values are the same, or increase or decrease the same, then basically, your increase is based on the, I mean, increase in the levy. Lost my notes here, but we're still working, we still don't have the assess value numbers from Cook County for 2021, so the 2021 is an estimate, 2022 is an estimate for Cook County. I'm estimating 7 percent increase this year, 3 percent last year for Cook County. This is the, 2022 is the triannual assessment, so usually there's a little bigger increase to get, to get caught up on that. Estimating 4 percent, DuPage County. Last year, DuPage County's increase was only 2.76 percent, so it wasn't as, it takes a while for the assessments to catch up to the cash value, to the sales, the sales prices that you're seeing. So, 2009, the EAV is where it peaked, 2009, 1 billion, 300, 1.36 billion. We're still 77 million below where we peaked in 2009, so we still haven't got there. Maybe, maybe next year.
Yeah, but in 2010, the EAV dropped 10 percent.
Yeah, it's coming up slower than it went down, I believe.
Always does.
So, these are the estimated rates based on the estimated EAVs. So, our levy is, our levy, again, is divided up by the burden, 38.83 percent for Cook County, and so the estimated rate's going to be about 1.03 or dollar three per, $100 assessed value. In DuPage County, 87, almost 88 cents, just down slightly. Combined rate doesn't, it's just kind of a combined between the two, and that's down slightly. Here's our, again, the piece of the pie. This is DuPage County 2021 rates, and you can see most of it is school district, 63 percent, the village is just under 10 Cook County rates, this is the 2020 rates, the school district, 58 percent, village was just under 9, 9.8 percent. So, the next steps, then, we'll advertise the public hearing this week, we'll have the public hearing next week, and establish the estimated levy, and then the, normally, we adopt the levy the first meeting in December, it needs to be filed with the counties by the last Tuesday in December.
We had, we restructured some bonds last, the beginning of the year, the end of last year?
2022, beginning of 2022.
Is that reflected in this?
Those, those actually went and changed the 2021 levy, because we had debt service in 2022. So, last year, they reduced the levy about $55,000, the 21 levy, after it was approved, and then we went and did the refunding, and then we went back and changed, abated more taxes before.
Went forward.
Property taxes went out, yeah.
So, the, the 2022 property tax levy, the history, and I'm not, I understand it is what it is, and I understand people are retiring and, and, you know, we have contracts that we have to honor. The police pension from 2012 to 2022, not quite, but did that, that almost but doubled?
I can go back to that. Yeah, 2012, it was 1.2 million, 2022, yeah, 2.5 million is their contribution, 2.3 million is what we're, we're proposing.
So, so, is this a, I mean, do we expect it to double again in the next 10 years? I mean, or how does the trend of new hires going into Tier Two over that time period affect that?
Yeah, the, the real issue is that we're at 73 percent funded, so we're required to get that caught up, so that means we're about, I can't, I don't remember the exact number, but almost 11, 15, 11 to 15 million in there, short of total funding that we got to get caught up on. Now, again, the investment returns is the bulk of the funding. Last year, with over 25 percent returns, when our funding level went way up, but when we have a return of almost a minus 4 percent, and we're assuming that we're going to return 6.75 percent, so that's almost a 10 percent shortfall on the $55 million, so that, that puts your contributions from investment income 5 million short, so that's where the property taxes really take a hit. We do smooth the investment returns over three years, so that the levy doesn't go up and down as much due to investment returns. Also, another factor is the, the funding pushes off the part where we need to be at 90 percent in 2040. The way that the calculations work, the increase slightly, the closer you get to the final year, you have to pay it all off. Now, they are working on, I know some funds in Illinois, they've already moved off that funding date, total funding date another 10 years. That might happen, might not happen. Either way, we need to make those contributions. What we end up paying in pension payments is not going to change, but the sooner we fund it, the more money you make on investment returns. I don't know if you, I kind of went around circles there.
No, that's fine.
I would go.
Did we, 73 percent we're funded at, you said? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, 70, 73.
That's pretty good, isn't it, compared to some community?
It's a lot better to other state police pension funds. It's a whole lot better compared to the state funds and the Chicago funds, yeah.
At some point, we were almost 78 percent with the returns until this year.
We were. So, we, if we left our investment rate of assumption where it was last year without bringing it down an eighth of a percent, we would be a little over 75 percent funded. So, every time you bring down your assumed rate of return, it increases your unfunded liability.
And I, I think that in 2012, the number of sworn officers was considerably lower, and the actuarial was probably much different than it is now.
Yeah, we had a significantly higher assumed rate of return. Right now, we have 41 pensioners that we're paying, so that is, right, when we add officers, we've added, officers have we added in the last five, four, four officers. They're not, those positions are vacant right now, but, yeah.
Would we say that the six that retired were early retirees?
No, no.
Some of that, what we're finding is that there's kind of a spike, because when we hired them, and Chief Olgood actually is one of those, that were hired under the COPS grant, so we had a big, and that was like when we were really growing, right? It was in the early 90s.
Yeah, we had a, we had a. We had a bunch of guys right around this, right around this time.
Yeah, so we had a bunch of our officers hired with the COPS grant, all hit 50 around the same time, so they hit retirement age at the same time, so we have a little bit of a bubble, too, that's kind of unique to our growing and that first year of the COPS grant to help our hiring.
And, Mr. Treasurer, you said we were going to pull 150,000 out of the general fund? What's the, what's the, what's the balance in the general fund above or below our policy right now?
We're at about 50, 50 percent right now. Our, our policy is 25 to 30 percent, plus some, some additional for retainage. We, this last fiscal year, the state had underestimated, you know, how much income tax we were going to be receiving, so we received, our income tax was over budget, and our use tax, which shifted to sales tax, did not reduce as much as we were estimating. We, we don't get numbers on use tax or where that comes from, so we, that was also underestimated by the state, so we ended up about $2 million in revenue over what we'd budgeted last year.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't just pay off the entire deficit in the union pension, the police pension?
Which, which.
You got 178,000 that we are short. You said you were just going to take a portion of, of the.
Yeah.
Falling police pension. Why wouldn't we just pay the whole 360-some thousand dollars with?
Oh, and keep the levy, keep the levy even with last year's?
Yeah.
We could, we could do that, keep the levy flat, that's one, one option that we could do. I was, we're going to have an increase probably the following year, so if you're going to go that way, and you don't take it from the general fund the next year, when there isn't a surplus, then you're going to have a bigger jump in the levy. This would be kind of smoothing out the increases to the levy.
Well, that doesn't make any sense to me, because you said we have an extraordinary amount in the general fund, taxpayer dollars, basically. Why wouldn't we just even out and pay off the entire police pension deficit? Not the entire one that I'm saying to get us up to 100 percent funded, but I'm saying this 178,000 that you have here on the.
The increase in the levy from the prior year.
169,000, yeah.
Have we taken, have we taken money from the general fund recently?
2019, we did. That was, we also had a surplus in revenue that year. We can.
I agree with Kevin.
I would prefer seeing this 169,175 in the police pension. Why wouldn't we just pay it all off?
Just make the levy, keep the levy the same as the prior year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
But did he say that then eventually, then there's going to be a big increase versus?
That's speculative.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what, what the increases are going to be. They've been increasing from year to year. If we have better returns, again, this next.
I'm just not in favor of leaving a huge amount of money in the general fund above and beyond our policy.
Yeah, our, our policy states to use it, we can use that money for capital projects, we can transfer that to municipal building fund for capital projects, future projects. We currently don't have any money in the fund for municipal projects, for capital projects.
Okay. Can we use money in the general fund to reduce the water rate? Why not? If we use it for a capital project for water rates?
We normally don't use it for operating expenses. We do have, we are planning on using the stimulus money for capital projects, which will affect, which will help reduce, I don't know about reduce the rates, but keep the rates from increasing due to capital projects.
All right, anyone else? All right, Todd, thank you very much again. I'm impressed you kept it to 25 words or less.
Thank you, Chairman Daney. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Gansey. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Report?
Yes.
We are.
Yes.
We are adjourned.